A Pursuit to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws in 1975. This meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on August 1st, 2017, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of August 3rd, 2017. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the Regional High School District have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on August 1st, 2017. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, really reasonable, just as for all.
Mr. Tiscano, would you like to make some additions to the minutes or agenda for this meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just before we went into exec session, the Board did announce some additional items that it was discussing as related to Box Exception Number Three. The Board did get an update on a student discipline matter. And with respect to Box Number Seven, the Board discussed Docket Number MON-L-2719-17, and also discussed potential inter-local service agreements with the various municipalities.
Okay, with respect to Item C, Meeting Minutes, does anyone want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to accept the minutes from the meeting of February 12th, 2018?
Motion.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Carolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right, were there any communications received in the last 30 days?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Before handing it over to Mr. Sampson for the Superintendent's Report, I just wanted to wish Carl Acetola happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
And he's doubly blessed today in that not only is it's birthday, but on his birthday, his son is going to get some well-deserved recognition for the district. Because Vincent Acetola, who's term ended on December 31st of 2017, is back with us tonight. I think he is someone that really represents the diversity of people we have on this board, where we have former educators, we have people who have never worked in a school before, and we had a young man who's incredibly accomplished from the district, resides in the district, and was a college undergrad, I believe, during the term when he was serving, correct? You hadn't had your undergraduate degree. Okay, right. And I, you know, I mean, this young man's resume is just unbelievable, and I'm sure there are CEOs in their 40s and 50s that don't match this man's accomplishments so far in life. So I just wanted to thank you for your service, Vincent. Your father did a great job raising you. I think we all enjoyed working with you over the past three years, and I just wanted to say that this plaque is certainly well-deserved, and that's just my two cents for serving with you for three years.
Look at Carl eating it up over there. So Vincent, we do want to present you with this plaque, and we'll come up for the photo op momentarily, but as Mr. Messinger said, you know, Vincent, I've known you for about seven years now, and, yeah, yeah. And you were doing amazing things then. It's very few 15-year-olds that I talk about that have their eyes on heading off to Yale, but are also doing screenwriting in their spare time, and now goes to college and then puts together international productions, literally, between China and America. What you've accomplished at your age, you honestly should take stock of, and really take a look and be so proud. And I'm not just going to give your dad credit, I'm going to give your mom credit as well. But your future is so bright, and I think it was awesome that you took the time to serve on this board and see another element of really just building your capacity to make great decisions as you move through your career. So I know you do great things, and we're going to all be reading about you, if we already aren't soon enough. So let's come on up and let them present this.
One more thing that really makes me happy is he makes more money than I do now, so what more could a father ask for?
He's so funny.
Vincent, congratulations. Okay, Mr. Sampson, if you could continue with the Superintendent's Report.
Sure. So just a couple of things, and we're going to have a rather extensive presentation momentarily on the referendum, but just a few odds and ends to go through. And Sean Boyce will speak about this somewhat in the referendum, but the state aid figures came out, and Freehold Regional High School District was one of 30 districts in the state that were flat. Every other district in the state saw some level of increase. It's a really complex process, you know, there were a number of districts last year that saw reductions after they had done their budget. We were not one of those districts, we were also flat last year. We do have a slightly declining enrollment, our aid figures are comparable to that of The governor's plan is talking about a four-year phase-in of funding the SFRA. We're not sure what that really looks like for us, you know, potentially it looks like a slight reduction each year. But this is so complex, and, you know, I was interviewed at NJ Spotlight and referred to it as the secret sauce of the state because they back into their numbers, so it's very difficult. From our perspective here, what we've seen over the past several years is that how the state has determined our ability to pay as a community has not kept pace with what our property values actually are, there's a discrepancy there. Sean and I, you know, crafted testimony to the Senate Ed Committee to that matter. If it's a four-year phase-in, then year one was already flat, and we'll see what year two brings, but I think there are just way too many unknowns at this point in time for what that looks like for us. I think it's a difficult spot when, for 10 years, you're happy that your aid was flat, while all your other expenses continue to increase, declining enrollment or not. I think that there are a number of districts in the state that have also been terrifically underfunded. I think that you can't have a system that creates winners and losers, you know, and the difficult part of this moving forward is going to be not saying, "I have to fund District X, but I'm going to do that by taking away from District Y." You know, and that's the difficulty there. And we'll talk a little bit about that, how that factors into the referendum. More snow on the way, May 25th is now a half a day of school. It's one of our give-back days as a result of having used our three allotted snow days. If we have a snow day this week, we will be taking from the Friday of spring break, so that looks very real with the recent forecast of 8 to 12 inches on Wednesday. We'll see how that all plays out.
So, excuse me, so that's on Good Friday that you would take away?
That would be the Thursday.
Friday of spring break.
Holy Thursday, Good Friday.
The next Friday.
It's the following, yeah.
Right, I thought you meant that Friday.
No, we don't mess with Good Friday, Michael.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
No, 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 I'm sorry, it's, yeah, we don't touch Good Friday.
Right.
We have one of our three special education dances, our Valentine's Day dance at Manalapan High School a couple of weeks back, and we do three of those over the course of the year. And we bus our students from all six high schools. It's an awesome day for those young people, and I think it's an awesome opportunity to get them to get to socialize with one another and to do it in a real safe environment, and hats off to the Manalapan peer leaders who really spearheaded that day, and those kids were absolutely fantastic. Couple meetings that occurred over the past few weeks, I met with Senator Gopau to discuss school funding and, you know, really just impressed upon him the complexity of what this all looks like, and we are a district that receives a substantial amount of adjustment aid. However, we're also a district that is incredibly efficient, and our cost per pupil is very, very low compared to our peers. And so just making sure that any school funding discussion isn't, it's not a black-and-white issue there, there's really nuances there that need to be understood. So the whole point of the meeting was really to try and open that conversation with him and to hopefully have a dialogue moving forward if any big changes are coming down the pike. And then we also met with Senator Thompson, who represents Manalapan, to talk about some of the proposals out of the Republican Caucus for special education funding, which we agree with, you know. One of the important things is to actually have special education funding, approximate the number of districts in your, the number of students in your district rather than just a census-based average, because some districts have more. So a district like ours that have created some really strong and powerful programs, we have a significant number of highly disabled students, and the extraordinary aid has not been funded to the level that it should. I think it's funded at like 56% of what it was, just as recently as five years ago, was funded at about 75%. And so they're calling for increased funding, the extraordinary aid, which I agree with wholeheartedly. I agree with the, I have to thank the Department of Education. I don't do that too often, but they, you know, we were scheduled for consolidated monitoring, and, you know, the department is looking at the schedule for that monitoring across the state, and so we'd already gone through that several years back, and so it's an opportunity for us not to be monitored again while other districts haven't gone through it once yet. So hats off to the DOE on that decision. And then as we get ready to transition into the school referendum, facility referendum presentation, and I'll open that momentarily, and then kick it over to Mr. Boyce. You know, just a few notes, the past couple of weeks in schools, post-Parkland, really, really trying times in the schools. I think that after Sandy Hook, the shooting, you know, there was a real palpable feeling of sadness, and after Parkland, there's a real palpable feeling of anger, and it's a real dynamic shift there, and we've been navigating that as much as possible. We've had meetings in each of our six high schools to discuss specifically our security protocols and how we continue to review and refine them. There's a security component attached to the facility referendum as well. We've had some really positive conversations with our local municipal officials across the district to make sure that we're moving forward on bringing S3s to our buildings, and very, very positive developments there. And I think that hopefully folks that attended any of our security meetings came away feeling that their children were absolutely safe in our buildings, as safe as anybody's ever going to be in a public place with 2,000 folks there. But I do think that we have taken security in this district incredibly seriously, whether that's from a drill standpoint, whether that's from a constant look at what we are or aren't doing. We are going to a even more updated instant notification system called Crisis Go, which is like the next iteration of the wave system that we currently have, but it's much more mobile and easily attached to cell phones and things of that nature, and instant access to the police department. The police department now, in event of an emergency, in all six of our buildings can access our cameras easily, and we're doing geo-mapping of our buildings so that as folks approach our, any of our campus in the event of an emergency, there's three-dimensional layouts of our buildings so that when they're looking, they need to respond to the auditorium. There's an actual, really, a three-dimensional map of that to get there rather than just some old blueprint that's photocopied. We've had the state out here to run unannounced drills, whether those are active shooter drills, lockdown drills, and to put us through the wringer so that we can continue to refine our procedures. The other piece of that house is a mental health component and making sure that we're taking care and helping and have avenues for students that are dealing with difficult issues, students that might be fragile. It's a high-stress environment, high school in 2018. The northeast corridor of America high school is particularly high-stress, and I think that in our strategic plan, a whole thread of our next plan is devoted to the whole child and social-emotional components to the growth and development of the children that we're responsible for, and we take that very, very seriously as well. Navigating difficult times, unfortunate times, I don't think anyone wants to navigate with our schoolchildren, but I really think, I'm really proud of the work that's gone on in the district. And I'm going to transition over to there momentarily.
It's going to be very complicated, I have one slide, so, hey, Sean. So, a couple of things to frame the presentation this evening, and the timeline on this, the referendum, so the site is for the Board. This is informational for the Board of Education. What we'll do in the intervening several weeks is ask that, questions, concerns, issues, things that are not clear, that the Board please reach out to Mr. Boyce or myself, and we're going to funnel those conversations through the Finance Committee to make sure that we vet them as fully as possible. Following the presentation this evening, and any of the fact-finding results over the next month or so, we're going to come back to the Board of Education for our April 23rd meeting and ask that the Board take formal action on that evening to authorize the referendum. But a couple of things to consider, you know, I've said it many times, in the era of the 2% cap on the tax levy, many of your larger infrastructure costs and issues and concerns are difficult to maintain on the basis that you may have been able to maintain them once upon a time. I think from 1970 to 2008, the average school budget in New Jersey grew somewhere around 70%. It's been capped since 2% before then. Personally, you know, whether it was financially appropriate or not, that's what the budgets grew. It wasn't ever a question of what you weren't doing, it was more a question about what you were going to do, what programs you were going to continue to add, and how you're going to take care of the infrastructure. We've seen a seismic decrease in the infrastructure projects that we're able to do over the summer in particular, that we used to do routinely 10, 15 years ago in the district. And Mr. Boyce and I have had multiple conversations over the past almost eight years now about, you know, the long-term plans of some of these things that we were going to do in the school district and what that might look like, and always with an eye to the appropriate timing to do some of these projects, and recognizing that we're never, you know, any referendum is a bite at the apple, you know, there's a lot more of the apple still left. But we've spent, we've spent the past several months really honing down to what we think are true priorities in order to do this, and we know that the timing is particularly good because the last referendum that the district went out for was for construction of Coltsnet High School 20 years ago, and that debt is coming off the books. So this is an opportunity to set our infrastructure and our academic house up appropriately in a modern environment for the long term. From a district perspective, one of the things that we wanted to be careful about and make sure that we were consistent with was balancing the individual needs of each of the six buildings that we had in very different shape, in very different construction, different lifespan of different areas, and then looking at our academic house, right, and making sure that as we move through our next strategic plan and our focus is truly on center, on student-centered instruction, what does that look like in the modern classroom, and how do we take each of our six high schools and from the perspective particularly of STEM, and make sure that we develop these multipurpose rooms that will be able to be used over time, and the equipment itself might shift out as technology changes, but the actual component of the laboratories will allow us to move into the future here with our facilities in terms of meeting our student needs. I think that the referendum balances that, you know, Mr. Boyce will go through some of those components, and then John Vice is here, our architect, who will speak specifically. But what we did in terms of looking at the academic component of what we were doing in our six high schools is, you know, we spent the better part of the past six months really looking at physical spaces and how we can continue to repurpose them in a way that allows us to move instruction into future, keeps pace with what students are being expected to know and be able to do in 2018. You know, I don't, you know, it's not about 21st century learning, it's 2018, right? It's about modern learning and modern spaces, and as authentic learning becomes increasingly important with what we expect of our students, we certainly need the physical space to be able to do that in a way that's commensurate with 2018 and not 1970, right? So we spent an awful lot of time running teacher-focused groups, meeting with groups of students, meeting with the principals over and over again, bringing John out to the physical facilities over and over again to really whittle this down to what we think is a quality project that sets real regional high school district up to meet the challenges of the next decade, 15, 20 years, and allows us to move some of our big-ticket needs out from under what we've done. And we've been really responsible stewards, I think, of the taxpayer dollars in all of this. You know, we went through the ESIP program, which Mr. Boyce will talk about, which allowed us to bond internally and not pass that to the taxpayers, did an awful lot of our HVAC and our roofs with that, but again, that was a bite at the apple. This is a second bite at the apple, and I think that the Board will see that we laid out a very coherent plan aligned to our mission for the school system. Mr. Sampson, you know, some key points for the referendum, and really the purpose of tonight's presentation is to look at the actual scope of the actual projects that are being proposed, and that's where we want to spend a lot of our time, but just by way of some background information, and the Board works with annual budgets each year, just for the benefit of the group. The referendum, different than an annual budget because it's something that spans a period of time. 20 years is the typical term of a referendum, it's issuance of debt similar to your mortgage in your home, whereas our annual budget is, has a very finite term, it starts on July 1, it ends on June 30. So the coordination of some of the work that we have planned in this referendum, it's not a matter of all large, big-ticket facility items are just being set aside until the time is right to put a referendum forward. As Mr. Sampson noted, there's been some, there was an ESIP, which is an energy-based project that, within the confines of an annual budget, we were able to fund more than $20 million of projects, most of which was energy-related HVAC systems, lighting, of that nature, but also a fair amount of group work was done there. And what you're going to see here tonight is, I think, a fairly balanced approach to making some progress in those areas, whether it's the academic spaces aligned to our strategic plan, or our athletic facilities, or infrastructure items that, again, move us more towards, you know, being a stable and being able to accommodate the balance of that work within the upcoming annual budgets. There are a set of parameters that drove the framework for the budget, and one of the important ones is expiring debt that's due to come off the books from a bond issued some 20 years ago. Our financial parameter was to take the benefit, the financial benefit of the expiring debt and split that, two-thirds, one-third, two-thirds reinvestment in the district, and one-third to allow the expiring debt to reduce property taxes associated with it. Now, in the grand scheme of things, understand that debt is only a relatively small portion of the tax levy, the overall tax levy. So from a perspective of impact on your own property taxes, the entire amount that's going to be expiring represents about 3% of the overall levy. So the one-third split would result in a 1% reduction in property taxes. Again, not significant, but we felt it was important to, from a philosophical position, to have all stakeholders and all perspectives represented. There are, there are a number of projects that Mr. Vice, our architect, is going to walk through. Jumped too far here with that one. So you'll see that there are some common items that are reaching across all of the schools, and others more specific to their needs and the decisions that they make. Again, this is just a quick look at it, but I'm going to ask John to come up here now and go over the actual projects and the scope, and then we'll lay in along the way. John?
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Amy, how do you want? John Vice, for the time Vice Hoppins, being the architect. Mr. Boyce indicated, we've looked at a number of areas with the administration, and...
Oh, Mr. Vice, all I need you to do is speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Not more important than trying to enhance the building's security. The district's overall approach has been, it's a good foundation, having security personnel at all the entrances, something many districts haven't had or are now beginning to look into, you've had that benefit. Four of the six high schools do have entrance vestibules in pairs, and there's some opportunities that we can enhance that situation to further improve security at the main entranceway by doing some hardware improvements. But the one in particular that we're focusing on here is that Marlborough is one of the school buildings that does not have a sort of a double vestibule. Once someone would come into the front entranceway, which is right along the main drive from the school, if they were able to gain access either intentionally or unintentionally, they could basically run past. Unfortunately, you have someone in this security office, but again, it's a bycar that would be interacting with students. So here in that borough, the objective is to create more of a... So here in that borough, the objective is to create more of a sort of a combination of entrances, one that deals with the day-to-day issues that come up. You notice parents dropping off lunches, dropping off papers, things like that, and allowing it in every case, some of which are already going to be implemented by the facilities department, but someone who wanted to come after school has started can go right to a controlled environment, perhaps have access to a better security window with a slot or a drop point there. If it's identified that the individual wants to come into the school as a purpose to be there, then through a series of doors, be able to unlock and allow that person to go in. So once school's in session, that's the point of access. So this is an example, we would do something similar at Freehold Borough High School. Very similar, but certainly an overall improvement.
Oh, I have it, John. So just so quickly, and it looks slightly different in each, but here's the common element: identification process and two sets of locked doors. Two sets so that someone doesn't follow in, it's a man trap commonly referred to. So identification process first, then one, then two, and that's a common threat through all of the schools.
The next, obviously maintaining an outside, a strong outside perimeter, of course, it's only as good as the doors remaining in a locked position. Having enhancement by cameras, which I know the district has, certainly helps that process. But should someone get into a school, the next best place, and you see this in these unfortunate circumstances, is the classroom environment. And with changes of building codes over the years, many of these buildings go back decades when they were first constructed, and building codes have changed over the years. So the industry's responded with ways to retrofit locks, they call them intruder deadbolt functions, and it's something that's supported across the state now. The state police have gotten involved and have offered seminars to school districts, you know, whether it's a key or not a key. This seems to be the prevailing approach so that someone in a classroom environment is able to throw a thumb latch, which was not allowed previously under the old building codes, because you didn't need to have special knowledge of how to get out of the building. So you were prohibited from having deadbolts. Well, these lock mechanisms have changed so that it doesn't require somebody to have knowledge of the key or understand where the key is. There's a code that goes out, whether the teacher's in the room or not, the students themselves can initiate that lock and basically lock someone out of the room in an emergency by just releasing the handle, which is what we're all familiar with, it would retract the deadbolt, which you see here, it disappears. There are different variations of whether or not there's actually an identification that says engaged or unlocked, but the common consensus is to use something that does not require special knowledge to lock the door. And that locking function is certainly only as good as the ability to improve the vision panel, which are typically in classroom doors, which are required to have visual connectivity from the hallway. Fortunately, the construction industry, the security industry's responded, I know the district used some of these products, but there are security films that are amazingly strong, and they have security ceiling that bonds the film to the frame, and it takes a considerable amount of effort to breach that, buying time, that's really the key. So we think this is an excellent investment in terms of going to that, improving security enhancements in the schools. And the proposal is to do the work at all six high schools. Next, let's talk about the modern learning environment and the concept of STEM or science, technology, engineering, math. You know, it's a buzzword that's been thrown around. Every school's a little different. There's not really a standard in the core curriculum content by the Department of Education. They're leaving it up to the various districts to begin to define what that is. And I was very excited to have the opportunity to talk with the principals and some of the actual teaching staff to see there's some amazing things going on. So what's the objective here? Conceptually, it shows you sort of the approach. It's adaptive reuse of space that you already have, and to be trying to do it in an environment that with support from other academic areas that might exist in the building, if you assume that this is sort of a typical double-loaded corridor, that you can create a cluster of spaces that can support each other in a collaborative way of bridging science, technology, math, and other types of learning tools and learning environments. So the concept of a STEM lab is basically to try and create an area for flexible layout. You have varying degrees of that currently, not at every school, but you try to corral specific functions because, again, not only of the uniqueness of the STEM program and the types of things that can be built or tested or designed, but also because of those changes in building codes. In 2013, the International Building Code adopted a much higher level of the energy code, which is called ashtray guide, and in it, it starts to look differently. What can be ventilated? How can you capture reused air that's already conditioned? In a regular classroom, that's pretty simple, but when you get into these types of environments because of the activities, certain code things kick in, which make it a little more difficult. So the objective to all this is to find ways to consolidate and corral, if you will, the types of activities, dust-making activities, using steel fabrication, welding if it's initiated in a STEM program, finishing, there's some of the 3D printers that are used, or the laser cutters that are used that have to have special ventilation. So the objective is to try and consolidate those in smaller areas rather than have them in, have the entire room open for those pieces of equipment, because when you do have to replace the air that's exhausted, you're now replacing the air for the whole space. Our goal is to try and find ways to corral those things, still maintaining good visibility from an instructor's perspective to those support areas, whether it's welding, finishing, fabrication for safety reasons, and of course, the other two supporting environments. So for example, we chose Manelepin only because it's somewhat representative of the common approach at each of the schools. It does have the benefit of a good amount of real estate to work within, but the current, if you will, STEM area is this one big, large room, but you have, again, woodworking equipment, finishing equipment, soldering, 3D printing, all happening in one space. So again, the goal here is to look at areas for correct classroom learning, planning and design, computer-oriented layout planning, not dusty or other activities that would create dust or fumes. An area that would be with more worktop tables that would be used for assembly and testing of pieces that might be fabricated and doing a STEM model. And then in some of the supporting spaces, having the 3D printers, this area, welding and metal fabrication, this area, and then the wood tools. This slightly minimizes the amount of space that would have to have special mechanical equipment, ventilation, dust collection, even to the point now that some plastics that get cut and wood particles, they can't go mingled now because of the types of remnants that are left over. There's not, you can't actually pipe them through the entire same exhaust system anymore. So in a nutshell, that's sort of the approach from the previous slide. You can see how we've adapted here. In a few cases, at Township and Manelepin, they do have the benefit of auto shop adjacent, which allows for some collaborative use of those spaces. Because we're sort of factoring this space, we are providing handicap, which is now required by code. And you can see the balance of space. It's really the look at this entire suite that really gives you a lot of flexibility in planning and executing this program at this school. So a little difficult to see, but this was this planning and design portion. We did a conceptual, three-dimensional model. To the left here would be the corridor that you would access to the room. You'd be looking across the classroom for future laptop use. Thank you. And being able to see through to the assembly and testing area. Again, creating new lighting, dropdown electrical cords where necessary, adwood storage for projects, and material storage, which is a bit of a challenge now. There's materials sort of all over the place because there's no room or place to store And a lot of flexibility with equipment, tabletops that can be rolled out of the way should they need to do special projects. Looking at the back portion, if you will, the assembly and testing area, most of these spaces do have natural lighting, which is a real benefit, and we're going to try and capitalize on that. But again, going through, this is sort of towards the back, or in the previous slide, the bottom of that layout, you'd be looking towards the outside wall, which would give you access to the woodshop area, wood fabrication, metal fabrication, 3D printing. So that's sort of the conceptual approach. This would be once you walk through that door. Manelepin does have a unique benefit of having that additional, almost formerly a vehicle day, I think, for the auto shop program, but this is, it's a perfect way to corral, if you will, all the woodshop fabrication and dust generating equipment. So it's not going to be all space and landing on two whole things, sort of a situation you have. One other project that we were asked to explore was looking at a modern learning environment, collaborative learning environment. This happened to be at Coltsneck High School. So the orientation is if you came in the front door to the school, you arrive in that large lobby and the entrance to the current media center is here. So we're looking to capitalize on reusing, adaptively reusing, what was a very large, unfortunately, under-unified circulation workroom area, and opening it up more for display, collaborative teaching here in the front and various display platforms inside. And there's more than ample room in what used to be an audiovisual workroom that we're proposing to be the support space for the circulation desk and information desk. What's being proposed is it's a very nice volumetric space, but we don't believe architecturally that it captures all the opportunities. There's a large volume ceiling, steep slope. So what was requested was to look at sort of this incubator space, if you will, and you'll see the uniqueness of these tables where this cluster or collaborative learning table has a computer screen at the end of each table, supported by overhead projection, maybe whiteboard space, so that no matter where the instructor is in the room, either walking up to a presentation screen or using a whiteboard, that the students can see 360 degrees around. And from that, in a collaborative way, if they were to break down into teen clusters or breakout for collaboration away from the computer, it's supported by some cluster seating, showing here's some ideas of the type of furniture that might come in. So we're really taking, we did an inventory of all the interesting shelving tables, chairs, and we just, we oriented them to make the space more usable. And quite frankly, we think makes better use of this break in center space with that large volume of the top. And we're only looking at trying to create some word definition with maybe some vision panels, segregated, maybe with some whiteboards that would be hard instead of glass, that would be more opaque, to be like a whiteboard surface. The furtherance of that concept, again, in a collaborative way, they would have support, research areas around the perimeter, and then there's been a request to look at trying to create an outdoor learning environment as a further expansion. So we think this gives a lot of flexibility, and again, as an incubator or test demonstration type space, we think with very little construction modification, it's just redefining the space. Carpeting is fairly old now, it needs to be really replaced, but we could really give a nice, fresh, modern learning environment that's supported by updated technology, which we think would be a real showcase for the district and particularly for that high school. One other area we looked at, of course, Freehold Boroughs, the old corolla of the district, a lot of gem, a lot of characters to it, but certainly it's one of the older buildings and doesn't have as much space, particularly in the auditorium area. So we were asked to look at trying to repaint, find ways to make improvements to the stage area, the portions of the stage flooring need to be replaced, it's been fairly deteriorated. And the thing that was very apparent to us, if you will, from this line forward is the existing auditorium now. What occurs in this existing space is prop storage, scenery storage, the tools that are used for scenery construction are just out there with everything else. We saw it as a real hazard that needs to be improved. The other thing that was very apparent was being able to save and store some of this stage material is just as critically important as the material itself, because we saw these sort of vicarious ways of stacking things, and we saw it to be a challenge in the future. So one of the first things we had to look at, right now, at this location, there's currently a partition that was added to the building after the renovations. This stage was enlarged in 1954, I believe. It happened to be our predecessor from the way it now never get fitted. We actually had the old drawings in the house, but, so they enlarged the depth of the stage in 1954, and it's a little shape here. Sometime in 1954, a partition was added across the back of the auditorium with two stairs. So what was, we believe, seating, as you see towards the back there, is just now open lobby space. So after talking with the administration and the principal on site and the young lady that heads the theater department there, they really didn't feel that communication, the circulation that runs from this point in the building to the bottom of the page was really that high in traffic. There's only one space on this side, which is, I believe, a music room, and the rest is storage. So we are looking at removing that partition that was added and giving it back, if you will, to the auditorium seating area proper, and trying to enhance the seats, which right now are just around 374 seats. And with this configuration, it adds another 100 seats, which makes going through this exercise perhaps more justifiable, that we're actually capturing something and making a physical improvement within the space to give you more flexibility, more seating. Next challenge, because of the, this side of the auditorium, there's a set of steps that take you up to the corridor. And on this side, it takes you into the corridor, it's basically all level. But if I was in a wheelchair, we had a patron that keyed to the school, was in a wheelchair, and they were near the front of the auditorium, if there was a fire that created smoke in this area, or they were unable to get to the back of the auditorium, we haven't really met the current building codes for having two means of egress for someone that might be semi-ambulatory or ambulatory. So the solution that we're proposing is to create a small, what we call an area of refuge vestibule, so someone in a wheelchair can go into a fire-rated enclosure. The code requires some kind of communication device, I'm in this area, please come rescue me, or call buttons. There's another set of steps inside, but we think that that satisfies that secondary remoteness of exiting at the outside of the auditorium if they're down toward stage front. And the next thing that we looked at was proposing a more inexpensive type of construction, not high finishes, we're looking at sort of a refined storage space, if you will, that we're proposing across the back of the auditorium. And the purpose would be to actually create a construction scenery area. And we did explore the idea of having the students who would work on stage productions go to the STEM lab, there's some wood shop equipment, it used to be where the old auto shop was on the far end of the school. But we thought about the logistics of, with a large scenery through the building to there, or, you know, trying to break up the work. So we thought, this made a lot of sense. We created a construction area, a large open floor space meant to actually lay out and paint and do the floor space meant to actually lay out, paint, do those types of things. Created confined storage areas for prop storage, they do have some relatively tall scenery that is just stacked currently behind a black curtain that sits at the back of the stage. And right now, if they needed to move from stage left to stage right, the props are kind of back there, you don't really have, have very little room. So the thought is, create a more confined area for prop storage, use it as an opportunity to create a very simple access way up to the area above this current space, and you would have some additional prop storage above. The other thing that was requested was a place to actually hang costumes, which I understand are currently stored in the basement area and are really challenged with a very musty smell, difficult to get the smell out of the, so it's getting into a dry area that properly designed to. So what are we doing in the remaining space that was stage right, is to create this two dry changing rooms, because they don't currently have those spaces, so it gives them some flexibility. So that's the proposal of how we would look at and trying to make this improvement in the auditorium. There is a mezzanine that's to the right, basically it would stay the same other than trying to upgrade the finishes and truly take advantage of the existing lighting booth, which was here, imagine way back, it was actually a projection booth at one time. But in working with the instructor, that we felt, land all the lighting controls, it gives them good visibility, the follow spotlights are currently positioned here and here in the balcony. So we think this is a good way to take advantage of what we have, make some improvements. There's some other areas we're looking at, re-insulating the ceiling, which apparently is currently non-insulated, which we understand may make the balcony almost unusable even with air conditioning, because it just gets so hot up there and it's something to be budgeted for. Next, the site improvements, really trying to continue better utilization of your existing properties. We know at Howe, we just completed a successful synthetic field along with the traffic placement and some bleacher upgrades. There are similar needs on a few of the other districts, excuse me, a few of the other high schools, so I've kind of run through tennis courts, reconstruction at all six, some are in fairly serious condition and need to be addressed for safety reasons. And with this improvement would bring sort of a rebound, so Menalupin would also have five tennis courts, they currently have three. So we have some grading issues to deal with there, but it would put it on parity with the other five high schools. Synthetic field are right now currently proposed at these three facilities. Bleacher improvements essentially at all but Howe, with some reconstruction required at Menalupin and Freehold Burrow. Burrows is a combination of really some structural concerns and where you were able to make some improvements or enhancements to the bleachers at Howe by adding kickboards to address people falling through, creating some handicapped accessible seating and ramp access. Freehold Burrow is very restricted in the way it was constructed originally, and the structural members in front of where you actually seat, that would be behind your calves, the angle iron stick outwards towards where your feet are, and so putting a, putting a kickboard, if you will, further restricts the width of the aisle. But more importantly, from underneath, you see a lot of sagging members and some vet members, and it was, we had an expert in bleachers at Longwood Van Cleve Engineering concluded that Freehold Burrows bleachers need to be reconstructed and Menalupin as well. But the others, we look at making the improvements like we did at Howe, adding the kickboards, enhancing the rambling to keep folks from falling on the side and the very. Trying to be surfacing at Coltsneck's proposed, all the other fields will have been done. And we were requested to look at field lighting at Coltsneck.
Marlborough.
Excuse me. Marlborough, apologies. Roofing, we didn't pick the red color to shock every time, but you have over a million square feet, I think it's a million 200,000 square feet of roofing that has been changed over time, some renovations, some replacements, a lot of it was done recently, but what was remaining is either out of warranty, you see everything in red is currently out of warranty. Now, that in and of itself doesn't mean it shouldn't be replaced. The question is, is it serviceable? And myself and two of my colleagues from my office, we surveyed every roof in the district going back when we were doing the energy projects, just to confirm roof type, visual observations, noticeable deterioration, problematic areas, those types of things. We have a matrix that has all, yes, the roof edge, metal, the coping, or this, or that. But in perspective, what we did, working closely with Mr. McGrawness and Mr. Voice, we did go and prioritize of the red roofs, which of those roofs are in the worst condition? And we've looked at that, the remaining roofs, whether out of warranty or not, have a three to five year continued serviceable life. But the ones that we prioritized and selected have been included and there's some roofing works done at each of the high schools, or proposed at each of the high schools to continue to address those. And then in terms of paving, another challenge, obviously it's, you know, it's a necessary part of maintaining this campus infrastructure. Paving, as we all see, driving around this late winter, early spring, they say the season is exceptionally poor because of the rapid change between extreme calls, warm spells, extreme calls, it is creating a devastating deterioration of roadworks around our state. Same thing, we had Van Cleve Engineering, I was working as a subconsultant to us, they worked with Mr. McGrawness, we identified three areas, three priorities, if you will, at each school, of what was the worst due to either highest volume of traffic or type of bus traffic, or problem areas where we know there's been drainage issues, sinkhole issues, those types of things. What was finally identified, as Mr. Short, Mr. Voice alluded to earlier, was again focusing on the priorities only. It's a small piece of this bigger pie of paving. We identified the priorities, which is what you see in yellow, and that happens at each of the schools. It's another one of those unfortunate things that further you go out addressing the problem, the more problematic, you know, believing will continue to come. And lastly, Marlborough boilers, boilers were not in the ESIP plan, for whatever reason, it wasn't contained through the local government energy audit, it became the state. But we did look at a way to approach this, they are relatively old boilers, original building, there is some hazardous material that has to be, because of the way the boilers are constructed, they have to be dealt with somewhat independently, but that's to be addressed as well. And it would put this school on parity with the other five, in terms of its efficiency from the boiler.
Okay, great. John, don't go anywhere, stay right there. This is just a recap slide, so you can see the numbers associated with it. The total referendum is $39.8 million, and you can see the breakdown within our four categories of focus. Some things, as I showed quickly on the chart before, and I'll walk through some of these now, the, the safety and security, that's across the board in all of the schools, will all receive the vestibules and the interior quick lock and vision panel upgrades that, that John spoke about. One other thing that's in here is PA systems throughout the district, which is also an important part of our security protocol. In five schools, they're going to be addressed, the sixth school, Freehold Township, we recently just addressed it. And, you know, there, there are three pieces to a PA system. The main piece is the box, the control box, but there's also wires that run out to the speakers and the speakers themselves. And the speakers themselves are fine, wires is going to be, once we switch out a box, we'll be able to shore that up, and we have some contingency built in there for that. So PA systems at the five remaining schools to be changed over. Into the modern learning environment, STEM classrooms across the board in slightly different variations, and John put an example or two up there so that you can understand the progression of the instruction from the research and the design to the fabrication, the testing, and then circle back and redesign as necessary, the really thought to finish process in that STEM lab, which simulates what a work environment will, will actually look like when they, when they do reach the work, the work world. The auditorium renovations at Freehold Burrow, the media center renovations at Coltsneck are actually paired with the three turf fields. So turf fields are not included at Coltsneck or at Freehold Burrow. So on a school by school basis, we make a decision on what's the best fit for that school, and some of that has to do with the availability of space athletically or what some of the other priorities may be. Burrow being an older school and the auditorium having some structural issues, as Mrs. Jewell, we've had that conversation, Mrs. Jewell's pointed out over the years, that's something that we want to address. Also, very much the smallest auditorium that we have as far as capacity, so we're able to expand some of that and take care of some other items in that. But, so those five, so the one missing is Howe, and Howe just received a synthetic turf field within the confines of our most recent budget. So that, that is, that rounds out that, those large ticket scope work across the board. Tennis courts throughout, so we have 28 tennis courts, all of that, five at every school, three at Menalupin, all of them are in need of attention. Some of them are so bad that we've, we've simply shut them down and locked them up, because they're just, they're, they're just not safe. They're certainly not playable, and they're even reaching the point where they're not safe. There needs to be some degree of reconstruction, and we're not talking about just an overlay of some new surface material, significant reconstruction across the board, all 28, plus adding two to Menalupin to give them five, as the other schools do as well. So that's the scope for tennis courts. Bleachers, as, as John pointed out, there's, there's two different scopes of work here. Burrow and Menalupin need some significant reconstruction while the others need some retrofitting, whether it's handicapped access or what's really caught our attention, and what we recently just did at, at Howe, was the area right where your ankles are, you know, a toddler can roll right through there and drop to the ground if you're, if you're, it's dangerous, and putting those kick plates in there, something that we just did while we were doing the field at Howe, and we're going to do that at the remaining schools. One other item of note is that they're included in here is the addition of a, a smaller set of visitor bleachers to supplement what's already there at Coltsneck. Coltsneck visitor side is a little thin capacity of bleachers, so to make that more comparable to the other schools, that's also included in here. HVAC boiler at Marlborough, most of our boiler HVAC work, we were able to accommodate within our ESIP in recent years, so we're, we're in a good place there. This is one that didn't make the cut there, but it's something that we need to address now, so it's being included. Both roofing and paving are, in my mind, have a similar explanation or description of. So roofing, and let me just give it to you in sort of high level, bigger numbers, 60% of our 1.2 million square feet of roofing were good, were within warranty, were, were good for the foreseeable future, and we have spent, you know, a good deal of money in each annual budget, dropping back. We were also able to fit a bunch of that into our ESIP, supplement that program and do another $7 million worth of roofs there. Of the remaining 40%, that's going to need to be addressed in the next three to five years, take that 40% and, and break that down, 40% of that need is covered here. The other 60% of the areas that will need to be addressed in one form or another in the three to five years coming, is, are things that we're going to need to accommodate in our annual budget. So it's, it's not, all of the work is being done, as, as Mr. Sampson mentioned early on, this is, you know, you take good chunks, a referendum can take good chunks, but it's not going to bring us all the way there, and we know that. Paving, very similar numbers for, for paving, there's 1.6 million square feet of driveway parking lots throughout the district. Again, approximately 60% of that is, is good where it is right now, the remaining 40%, again, to be consistent structurally as we design this within the parameters that we set, 40% of that is included in here, and the remaining 60% we will need to address in upcoming budgets. What we have done recently, unlike roofs, which we have put significant money into within the last 10 years, you know, consistently, paving, something that at least in the last several years, we've not been able to go out there and do, you know, wholesale paving of lots. It's, it's a, it's an expensive, surprisingly expensive paving out there, and what we have done is, you know, to the best of our ability, fill holes, that's never a long-term solution. It never, as, as John mentioned, the contraction and expansion of, of that through the weather condition changes, you know, it's just a short-term Band-Aid, so we take a nice bite out of that scope of work, but again, it's only, you know, 40% of this, of the, the portion that's going to need to be addressed in, in the coming years. So I just wanted to give you sort of the, an overview of, this was the checklist that we had seen earlier. So there's, there's balance, we think, we tried to strike a balance between the various categories of work and also across the six high schools. We think we've struck that fairly well on the financial end, you know, it's, it's a matter of without, and you could see a fairly simple graphic that actually I, I saw somewhere else, and I just completely lifted it and brought it to this presentation, that, you know, with referendum, without referendum, the difference is there. So the coordination with the expiring debt, we're working with our financial advisor who has modeled up a few different scenarios. There are some variables there that we need to allow time pass, and once a referendum, after October 2nd has come and gone, we'll see what the conditions look like, and we'll have some additional pieces of information, like the level of commitment of state aid towards this project, and we're estimating somewhere, I believe, 17 to 20% of the cost of the project, and that's already factored into the tax impact piece. The 38 point, or 39.8 million that you see here, that's the question that will be on a ballot, that's the amount of bond issue, where the state debt service aid comes into play, is in the 20 years that follow, that you were only raising levy, tax levy for a portion of it, while the state is, is, they, that's where they contributed there on the debt service then. So the net aggregate effect of it is what we, what we're targeting at two-thirds, one-third percent. So as I mentioned, there's, there's a few different scenarios, we need to see where the state, state aid lands, we need to see how interest rates move along the way in that time, and then we'll determine what's really the best way to approach it. And there's single bond issues, there's multiple bond issues, there's, there's temporary notes that you could do to bridge you, and, and a lot of it has to do with the need for your cash flow, and all of that work is planned out, taken into consideration before recommendation of what the best way to proceed with the financing mechanism is. Regardless, our target of two-thirds, one-third, that's Regardless, our target of 2/3rd, 1/3rd, that's something that we feel very strongly about. We could go and have a $60 million referendum with no tax impact, right? It would just simply be replacing the existing debt with new debt, no tax impact. We felt this was the direction that we wanted to go in our recommendation to the board. So in terms of timeline, so, and this is just a draft, very tentative, but it's just to give you a feel for what it could look like. There's essentially two summers' worth of work to be done here. The one exception to that are the security aspects, which is something that we would look to implement, get up and running immediately following a vote. So security measures, the vestibules, the PAs, the door locks, those things will be first out of the gate just after the October vote as quickly as possible. The breakdown of projects between the summer of '19 and the summer of '20, we've taken into considerations as far as availability of utilization of spaces, if it's athletic facilities. And we try and, we'll work with the principals to try and minimize the impact on their operation along the way. A lot of this work, I will say more than that. I will say the majority, vast majority of this work, we hope to get done during those summer periods so as to have the least amount of disruption to the educational program as possible. This will become more clear as this project is refined and finalized, and then we can actually see what the bids come in and lead times and that type of thing. We'll finalize this at that time. Voting information. So the long and short of voting information is it's no different than the existing voting protocols for the communities. So you would vote at your same polling location. It will be, you know, you register the vote the same way, absentee ballots the same way. All of it, everything's the same. October 2nd is the date that's being proposed to move forward. So, and we'll include that information up on our website when the time is right to make sure that people are pointed in the right direction to get to where they need to. It's managed at the county level, so we'll make sure that those links are in place. So, John, thank you for the work that you did. And I don't know that John spent quite enough time on it, the amount of work that John is in Shannon out of his office and other architects spent, coming back here, coming back here, coming back here, meeting with the building administrators, talking with teachers. I was part of some of those rounds, and they were interesting conversations, particularly with the teachers who were saying, so here's the issue. You know, I can't use the 3D printer because it takes too long and the kids can't get back to it. It's just real-life issues that, from that teacher's point of view, what impacts their program. And John spent an inordinate amount of time back and forth and meeting with people and really trying to understand that part of the program. So we appreciate all of your work, John. And I also wanted to mention Pat LaGravines, who's tireless worker here for the district who's really, has a lot of the history as part of a lot of the thinking and a lot of the solutions to all, any and all facility issues that come about in the district. If there's snow, you know, Pat's on the phone with Chuck. They brief me at like 8:00 when I get up. So I just ask, how'd it go? So, but Pat LaGravines does an incredible amount of work here, and it's high-quality, top-shelf work as well. So thank you to him. That's our briefing of the referendum that's being proposed, the scope of work. And I'm sure that you have a lot of thoughts, and it's a fair amount of information to digest. As Mr. Sampson said, that over the next five weeks between now and April 23rd, there'll be time for us to communicate back and forth. And really, within the next two weeks, we look for a lot of that to happen. And then to sort of pull all of that, all of those thoughts and concerns and considerations and questions together, and sit with the finance committee to vet through some of that before we get back to the board with any refinements that had come up for your consideration. There is on the agenda, and then I'll just give you an opportunity to ask any questions or any clarifications that you may have right now. There is an item on the agenda that authorizes plans to be submitted down to the state. So let me just explain. This is just to get into the queue. So the state has some timelines, and referendum and educational projects need to be reviewed by the state and signed off on before a referendum can go forward. They look for a six-month window to do that. And we want to, not that they're going to start working on it six months. I mean, they're just, it's just getting it into the queue. It does not obligate the board in any way. It's just the mechanics of it. So authorization for John to submit that down to, some of that paperwork down to the state can be amended, can be withdrawn. There's no commitment on your part. But I just wanted the board to take action to allow that process to begin so we can hit those milestones that the state has set forth for us. So let me just open it up. Mr. Massinger, if you want to lead that conversation.
Yeah. One thing that both Sean and Chuck had mentioned that I really want to reiterate is between now and the next meeting when we take this vote, there's definitely going to be a finance committee. So in addition to asking any questions you may have now, as time goes on over the next week or so, and you think of these individual issues that you want to bring up pertaining to your home school, hometown, forward those to Sean and Mr. Sampson, and they'll all get funneled through the finance committee. And at the finance committee meeting, all these things will be addressed, so everyone on this board will have the answers. So I just wanted to reiterate that. I did have a question about referendums and debt in general, because I've heard from several boards of education over the past few years, whenever they wanted to propose something, they'd come out and say, hey, you got to vote for this because if we do it by December 31st, the state's going to pay X dollars of this, and if we don't, we'll have to pay 100%. Could you review what I'm referring to in terms of the state funding particular portions of referendums or, I should say, capital expenditures?
Yes. So there are eligible projects and there are not eligible projects. And we have some of both in here. Without getting into it, health and safety, educational spaces, those are the things that fall into the eligible category. The state will fund, and it varies depending on whether it's brand-new square footage versus renovations. They will fund a portion of that. Now, 40% is typically the number that's put out there. We've taken that number. We've looked at recently what percentage of that has it ultimately turned out to be. Because it may be a 40% funded by the state, but when the debt service aid does come through, it's discounted some. So then it's not really 40% at that point. Additional square footage is a different scenario, and we don't have that, so we won't deal with that. So we've looked at what's been the history of the state as far as the level of funding. We started with the 40%. We'll apply it to the eligible projects, and then we'll discount it based on what we've seen and what we would expect to see. And it shakes out to, I think we're using the number 17% right now. But we need to see what level of commitment they'll have. So our financial modeling is conservative in that regard, and also in terms of interest rates. But again, a lot of that will come clearer. So, you know, it does not need to be a referendum in order to gain state support. However, a referendum allows the state to pay that support via debt service aid. So in the future. If we were to do this within the confines of our operating budget, as a single project, you'd be looking for grant funding because there'd be no debt service. We wouldn't be issuing any debt. So that's possibly what you've heard, is that if it's not financed, then you're limited to state grants instead of debt service. And at that time, there may be no pool of money available through the grant process. John?
That's currently the case right now, that they've gone through, the state's gone through four rounds of regular operating district grants called live grants. We understand that there's a pool of money still remaining from the fourth round. It's my prediction that the governor, the new governor, will find some time in the near future to perhaps tap that money. It's already been appropriated by the legislation. But currently, there are non-grants being offered. But it might be in the future, it might help the district address some more of the roofing for certain, the eligible.
Yeah, just one final word, Mr. Bruno. And then the origin of the state picking up some of the financing for school districts is a piece of legislation that was passed several years ago called the Educational Financing and Construction Act. And that made available $8.6 billion. And what really drove that was that the condition of schools, particularly in the urban areas because they've been around the longest, was in such disrepair that the state needed to step in and take some action. So $6 billion of that $8.6 billion was set aside for the urban districts. The remainder was made available to the rest of the districts. So that was the origin of it that started the process. And then periodically, in no really foreseeable rhythm, additional money is made available by the state into these programs. But currently, where we stand, there is no grant money available, or do we expect it to be? Debt service aid is a byproduct of financing long-term, and that's what we're currently factoring in.
Mr. Boyce, does it matter what kind of projects they are? Like, you have a very well-diverse...
It does.
Yeah.
It does. And some are eligible and some are not eligible. And in the aggregate of all of that for this, this referendum as proposed, and appropriately discounted based on what we've seen, we're looking at in the range of 17%. That's what we anticipate being picked up by the state.
I got to tell you, honestly, this was a very good presentation. I lived through the last one back in 2002 when we did all the buildings. This was very interesting because it hit everything. It hit athletics, it hit academics, and I'm happy to see something for Freehold Borough finally with the auditorium.
And safety.
Because it's, you know, it needs to be done. So it was pretty amazing to see the work you guys put into it, really. Well done.
Well, I think the strategic plan really sets the stage for it, and then fitting it in with, that's in alignment with that, is, you know, the natural way to proceed.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mike. Actually, I have a few comments on this. Sean knows this. But first of all, Sean, you thanked a lot of people. I worked in civil service and overseeing civil service and in the private industry for the past 25 years, civil service way before that, revealing my age, my birthday age here. But I'll tell you what, Sean, it's easy for an employee to say, wow, that's a lot of work, I'm not going to do it. I, as a resident of Coltsneck, would like to thank you personally for taking the initiative to do this. I know how much more work it could be, and you could just sit there and say, oh, we don't need this. John, I don't want to get too technical with this. I know the lingo here, but let me try to explain it to people that don't. I probably, and I don't want to, you know, get myself in a jam by being proved that it's not true, but I probably wrote more Section 504 Needs and Transition Plans than anybody in the state of New York and New Jersey. And what Section 504 is, is it relates to handicapped accessibility in relation to American Disabilities Act. And I'm really impressed with what you did. And my question to you is, I know at public housing authorities, the enforcing agency, the ultimate enforcing agency is the Department of Justice. But internally, they have Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity at HUD, and they're real federal agents. They're law enforcement personnel that can enforce the law. These are things that have to be done according to law. This isn't, you know, we can think about doing it, as you know, John, they have to be done, and it's important that it's done. Who is the enforcing agency? I have two questions. With school districts, and have you been cited at all in Freehold Regional, or we're just ahead of the ball there?
Well, I love all the compliments fly around, but the citation comes right over here.
No, no, I'll tell you what. After the meeting, I'll talk to you about, as I usually do.
I'm joking, but I think, and I don't want to speak for John because he's the expert, but, you know, any new construction, you need to upgrade those. Our bleachers in particular have been a real area of concern for us across the district. We've been concerned for that. We've, much like our tennis courts, we've sort of Band-Aid it over time, and you can get away with that if you're not changing the construction, right? But once you do that, you have to make sure you're ADA compliant, which we need to both fix what's happening there and make sure that we're ADA compliant. It's the right thing to do with those bleachers when you're sitting out there. True story, as a high school principal, you cannot make this up. We had similar issues in my bleachers. The board president at the time fell through the bleachers at a football game. So to make the point, it was not lost on the individual that we needed to upgrade our bleachers. But John, I don't know if I'm missing anything.
Well, Chuck, just to answer, to add to what you said, today, I called up Sean, and my, probably my exact comment was, what, are you kidding me? You need new bleachers? What kind of waste of money is this? You know, I looked at the bleachers at Coltsneck High School, and they're fine. And Sean said to me, no, they need a kick plate because kids could fall through. End of story. That's right. One kid being injured.
At least little guys.
That is unacceptable. It can't happen, so it has to be done. So that was the correct answer. But I did leave you with two questions there, Sean. Who, yeah.
My experience.
John.
The board would understand that there's really two aspects to this issue of handicapped accessibility. One is code, building code, the other is federal law. And as Mr. Sampson pointed out, the minute we touch the room, the example here is the auto shop. We're proposing to do a renovation in there. We have to provide accessible routes to get to. And if we renovated the room without the lift, then technically we would be not compliant with the building code. What we find on the law side is, and your district, I think, has made great strides in trying to make sure your buildings are accessible. I haven't heard of anything like that, but at least anything learned. But I'll give you an example. We work with another regional high school in Hunterdon County, and they have a fairly spread-out campus, and they had a young student who was in a wheelchair. The district was making accommodations to pick her up at the front door to drive her to the back wing. And the parents filed a complaint against the American Disabilities Act, saying that you are accentuating my daughter's disability. And as the district was required to put in two elevators, which was a very expensive issue. So when we get involved with clients, particularly the tough question comes with classroom doors because you have so many classrooms. We try and offer a practical approach that the board can confidently say, you know, we've done a fair attempt to make our buildings accessible. And we had, say, you're not an elementary school level, but let's say in the language arts wing of your school, or the mathematics arts in the science rooms, if all the doors were not complying either with clearance on pools or push, those types of things, that if you had, say, four of those science rooms, if you attempted to at least have one of the four accessible, that's, I think, a fair compromise so it doesn't become a financial burden. Because to go back and retrofit a building is... Because to go back and retrofit a building that's 15 years old can be a real financial hardship, and there's ways to accommodate it. But specialty spaces, libraries, cafeterias, culinary arts labs, music programs have to be accessible. And if you're not, then you run the risk of being cited under federal law. I believe the complaints go to the Department of Community Affairs and then use their state program."
And ultimately, it could end up, as what you just said, in the Department of Justice on a federal level because it's also a federal law. So, of course, we want to avoid that. The two tests to see if you're mandated to comply with renovating under Section 504, at least in public housing under the Code of Federal Register, one is if a structurally bearing member has to be removed. That's one. And the second one is that 80% of total development cost or something like that, pretty close to that, to do the renovation. But with that said, we have to do the right thing. As Chuck said before, it's the right thing to do, and we don't want to discriminate against anyone. In fact, we want to help out and assimilate anybody that needs those accessibility routes. So, it is the right thing to do. And I'm very conservative with looking at the budgets, as everybody knows, but when it comes to the items that have been addressed in this referendum, I really think that Shaun keyed in on the right areas, and thank you. I'm sold on it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. Mr. McMeans?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce, can you give us a sense of the timeline for the drafting of the actual, like, question for the referendum, and will it, whether it will be a single referendum? I've seen sometimes they're broken out into multiple questions.
So, there's an option, and what Mr. Fankhouser is referring to is an option of segregating, separating some of the items and making multiple questions. And there are pros and cons to that, and as currently designed, we envision it being a single question put forward. But I will have, you know, the different considerations for that delivered to the board prior to the 23rd vote. But the actual language of the question would be part of that vote on the 23rd. That's the official approval of it. But yeah, so there's ways to do that, and like I said, there's pros and cons to it.
And do we have any special, like, obligations to, you know, for publicizing because October 2nd is a very unusual date for a vote?
I'm not sure if there are any obligations, like legal obligation. I mean, there's going to be certainly, and Mark, please weigh in if you do, you know, it would have to be, follow the normal protocol for anything that's going to appear on a ballot, which the county would have that and go through the proper advertising channels for that. We're certainly going to reach out to the community on our own in a variety of ways between, you know, approval and vote, and certainly do the best job that we can to, you know, inform everybody of what it's composed of.
To echo Mr. Boyce's point, there are not so much obligations as there are prohibitions. So, a district cannot espouse a position or not. It has to put out for factual information, and any publications that go out within a certain period of the date of the actual vote, if it's within a window, I believe it's 60 days, it requires the approval of the county office in order to make sure that it is not pushing a position.
In the final language for that question that's developed, Shaun mentioned the application we're going to get in Q. is in July, October 2nd. Excuse me, by approximately April 6th is the date. So, somewhere about the midpoint, 90 days into the process, the state will issue a what's called preliminary eligible cost letter to the administration, and that will be when the board really makes that go, no-go decision. Proceed with what the state's offering. Based on that, you'll either accept that, maybe want to amend it, maybe want to reject it. Then the council would use that language and now to define and say, yes, if the state's going to offset long-term debt, and they formally define the questions, as your counsel mentioned about 64.
It's an interesting consideration, the question piece, you know. What you'll see many districts do is oftentimes you'll have multiple questions, and one of those questions will be related in varying degrees to community consternation in some way or not. And I think that, I think the reason that we've looked at this as a single question is because we've gone through so many iterations to make sure that it's balanced by need with each of the six buildings, that what we're hopeful for is that the community will view it as a really balanced approach to meet long-term needs in all six high schools, and there won't be something that seems to appear to be an anomaly or an outlier in some way that might get some community angst, you know, for lack of a better term. And I think that that's why, you know, we've gone through, you know, Shaun is, you know, there's been, you know, probably dozens and dozens iterations of this along the way, where we've refined and looked and refined and looked and refined and looked, thought something, and, you know, kind of dug into it and said, "No, that's not it," you know? So, I think that we've really tried to just, in our eight different communities, hopefully have all of our school community members comfortable with, there's a long-term plan in place here to guarantee the academic house, the infrastructure and other needs, while the community members, you know, the wider community that is the tax-paying group will also say, you know, "There's been some real responsible stewardship of what this looks like." And hopefully, that message comes out as we move forward because that's certainly the intent.
If there are no other questions, we'll move forward. Do you have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports, I don't believe in the last 30 days there were any committee meetings to report on. So, we're going to move to public participation. Is Mr. McMeans still here? Okay, Mr. McMeans, please come up to the podium and speak into the mic.
I'm here just to position for a change in policy regarding homeschoolers participating in high school sports. The position that I understand right now is that homeschooler has to be public high school sports team to be denied. There's precedents in other towns where homeschoolers are already participating. Bullbridge, Sayreville, Madawan, all friends of ours, they homeschool their children. And we'd just like for our homeschoolers to have the opportunity to participate in high school sports. And that's it. Right now, what I'm seeing, the administration of the coaches, they say that the position is, the board is to deny, and the only way to have them participate is to have an official ruling or statement by this board to allow homeschoolers to... The state law does allow it, but to my knowledge, the position is for the administration coaches to deny students' access to public school students.
I did get your original email, and I had some preliminary discussions with the administration, but I don't know if the administration wants to address it, but what will happen is, I think, what, we'll circle back with the administration, because not all the board members here are aware of the situation. And what we'll do is, we will talk about it and get educated about your situation, and, you know, the board will make, you know, will address your issue, and we'll discuss whether we want to change the policy.
Okay. Do I just come back to the community with my statement?
You know, that is a good question that I'd have to get back to you with.
I certainly have somebody from my office reach out. You know, the position has been, we have the position that if you're not enrolled in the school district, we don't allow participation in after-school activities. With athletics in particular, the rationale has been that we hold the students within our school system to certain courses, certain grade point requirements, and we cannot verify that or guarantee that in a way with homeschoolers, that we think it's potentially unfair to the students that are held to a standard within the school. So, that's the rationale for the policy. It's been in existence for as long as I've been here, certainly, that I can speak to. You know, we're always willing to take a look at it, but there's, you know, I don't want to be misleading. The major issue is there is that we cannot, we feel it holds our students who are enrolled in the district at a disadvantage who are held to very specific standards that we monitor.
My son is already enrolled at Brookdale Community College at age 15, and I'm sure you understand that you're subject to... I don't know if you want to take it on a case-by-case basis or anything like that, but he's not going to have any trouble getting into college based on the way our faculty and words and the way we teach. And colleges accept our grades and would accept them if they're team based on, or accept them into the college based on our faculty and our grade. And any homeschooler would do that. And any homeschooler would go to college. The question is there as well. There is record. We have to...
All right. So, I think that, well, I know for a fact that what we're going to do is, we will definitely be getting back to you because I know that the administration has your contact information, I have your contact information, but I think this is something that the board, like I said, want to get up to speed on it, your individual situation, and the board would need to come to a decision and get back to you with an answer. So, the only reason I said I'm not sure is because I didn't want to make you come back to the next meeting if we had not made a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was it for public participation. Before we move on the agenda, Mr. Boyce does have a change to make.
Thank you. Under G7, approval of change of status, Robert Craven, his school is listed as Coltsneck High School. It should read Howell High School. That's G7, Robert Craven. That's all.
Okay. Want to know if anyone wants to put forth a motion to adopt agenda items G1 through K3 on one ballot?
Motion.
Good. Mr. Boyce, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, except on H4, there's a check that's in my name that I'm going to abstain on, and I'm going to abstain on H5.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhouser?
Yes, with the exception of K3 on the social media policy, no.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, on everything except for Charles Sampson's conference.
And you're abstaining on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. This is, Mrs. Capiello should also abstain, Mr. Sampson's conference. I want to be accurate.
Yes, could you add that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any old business?
I just wanted to make a comment. I understand the job fair that we had back in March was a great success, and I want to compliment everybody. I understand it's quite a ticket to get there, an interview there. So, congratulations, Dr. Sharp and your crew and everybody who volunteered.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bruno. All right, we'll move on to new business. There was actually two things I wanted to mention in new business, and of course, anyone else is welcome to bring up any issues they'd like to do. The first one, circling back to something Mr. Sampson had said about the security meetings that were held in each school. I had attended the meeting in Marlborough, and Dr. Bleakley and his team, including Mr. Lipson, did a really good job. And unfortunately, when the meeting started, there was only five people there. And, you know, the story's different in every high school, but I just wanted to indicate I thought the administration at Marlborough High School did a very good job. And as a matter of fact, having two kids in the district myself, after Dr. Bleakley's presentation, I mean, I couldn't conceive of a safer place in the town of Marlborough, the state of New Jersey, than Marlborough High School. He went down the bullet points one after the other. And going into the meeting, I knew security was top-notch at the school. So, I just wanted to reiterate that I think they did a very good job. And I'm sure at all the other schools, the administration, you know, had the same bullet points and made the community feel like we were doing everything possible to assure the students' safety, which of course is our number-one priority here. The second issue on new business I wanted to bring up, and this is really just to get a straw poll, was with respect to a potential resolution about marijuana. And just to reiterate, my whole point of this is really to get a sense to our politicians, really, about Mr. Sampson's views on it. Because obviously, being the chief administrator of this district, I think his opinion is very well thought out. He's got facts behind it. And that was my whole rationale, really, to make sure before these state legislators take a vote in Trenton, that they have all the information. Because once again, over the weekend, I read in the Asbury Park Press, all these big articles about marijuana, I can never find any mention about the impact to young adults. And when I had my initial meeting with Mr. Sampson after becoming president, he went over about five to seven different bullet points about why he thought, you know, legalization of marijuana was a bad idea for the students in our district. So, that's really the point of it all, is really to get a message to the legislators to pay attention to the impact that it will have on young adults because everyone's focused on the money, money, money. But I think, given what's transpired in the district with today's teenagers, it's something we should get at. So, that was my whole point. What I wanted to do was theoretically, you know, just pass something short and sweet, to the point that really use Mr. Sampson's bullet points based on facts, and just get that into the hearts and minds of the legislators. So, I don't know if we want to do a straw poll and see what the other board members feel about this issue, because I certainly don't want to, you know, take my opinion in. and spread it on to all the other board members here, passing a resolution. So I don't know if anyone else has any opinion, I know we have several former educators on the board, and I'd love to hear what their feelings are, given that they've worked with our young people over the course of their careers, what they think about it.
When we speak about marijuana and the correlation, even from smoking cigarettes to marijuana, to unfortunately, other drugs, I think it's something that we should definitely speak on, and his bullet points, Mr. Sampson's bullet points are excellent, in fact, today we even got some more information on it. So it was alarming, some of the stuff that we read just today. I think it was from your group, was it from your?
In JP.
In JP, yeah. And another survey that I read today on marijuana, it's just not getting out. I think the politician part of it, the political part of it, and the money these states can make, have you been to Colorado? Great place. But there's things socially that are happening, so I think we have to look at that. And as a board, when we vote on something like marijuana, it's going to be in the paper. It's going to, because it's a big regional school board, and it's something we have to think about. But the safety of the kids, I think it's something, it's important to do as a board, to come up with some kind of bullet points, policy, something about it. Because I think the parents want it. I think the parents are kind of even afraid to even say it, but I think they would like to hear something like that from our, from the regional school board.
Yeah, I mean, just, I don't want to interrupt anybody else, but I would say, I've been on the board six and a half years now, and by far, the number-one issue, the number-one concern that parents have is definitely illegal drug use. I mean, for every one issue somebody has, there's 10 complaints about illegal drug use, and that's their biggest concern, I know, about Marlboro High School, no matter what the SAT scores, no matter what the college acceptance rate is, that's like, you know, parents' chief concern. So therefore, I think it's something that I would feel very comfortable addressing as a board of education. I mean, obviously, we're not lawmakers.
We're not talking about legalization for medical.
Right. Right, it's just to deliver the message about the impact to teenagers and our schools about this. Anybody else have a feeling on this?
Yeah.
I didn't have an opportunity, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, right.
I didn't have an opportunity to look at Mr. Sampson's bullet points. I, I apologize, because I ran from work, I didn't know you sent them out. I, I guess what I'm going to ask is what your feelings are on the thought process of a resolution by the board, based on what your research was, which I apologize for not having had the opportunity to read.
So, so I'll say that the, you know, the research is convoluted in the sense that you have two very distinct camps who are, you know, really trumpeting what is working in one way and working in the other, and one of the things that I noted in what I sent out earlier today, and I apologize for how late that, that came, I, I'd shared it with you, but not, not with the board. And I think that, you know, I was clear to state that there's, there's a whole other component to this. However, I, you know, personally, and Ms. Van Cauzer actually sent me an article earlier today, which I thought in many ways was spot-on, where there was a conversation around, when you're coupling criminalization with legalization, that you can decouple that, you know, that I think that you can, if, if the argument is around decriminalizing marijuana, you can still make progress without, with that, without, without making it legal for recreational use. I think that that's a very dangerous precedent for the state. I think that, I'll, I'll give the example of the proliferation of vape shops, and how vapes have permeated our school system, and what that's become for us to deal with. When you have more, you literally have more marijuana shops in Colorado than Starbucks, and when that becomes, when that proliferates through the, the region, I think that the access for those under 18 will become much easier, much more readily available, and I think that we have seen in schools, in all of our careers, a, a progression of, of use, you know, that's, that's really alarming, and, and most of that does start with marijuana, with the students that we, we ultimately try to help who might have, you know, some stronger issues, and they're dealing with other things. I think it's a, I personally, and I, I don't ever pretend to speak for the board on this, you know, I've, I've made my, my perspective as, as an administrator and as a father clear, and as an educator, you know, but when, when, when the debate is becoming so heated, I think that it's, I think that's important to look at some of this. I think that the editorial that Rick Fuentes, the recently retired head of the state police, wrote in the March 11th edition of the Star Ledger, was powerful. Now, some of those statistics about car accidents and other issues in Colorado, because he referenced a, a number of the things in Colorado, have been challenged, but the grounds that they seem to be challenged on are, in my estimation, a little bit loose. What has been clear from the Colorado example, and what they've, as a state entity, admitted is that the first couple of years that they legalized it, they did not have appropriate controls and monitoring in place, and there were a lot of unanticipated concerns and issues that, that occurred as a result of that. I'm, I'm never going to pretend that I think it's okay to legalize a, a substance that we may, that, that we would have those same ramifications for a couple of years in New Jersey, with six high schools and 10,500 teenagers, from a, from a specific standpoint of where we are in terms of, you know, that, that time in those kids' lives, I think it would have a profound impact on what happens in our hallways. And so I do know that, you know, of my colleagues, I don't know any superintendent that's supporting the legalization for recreational use. Medical use is a whole other conversation, the, the decriminalization of it is a whole other conversation, but I do think that there's, there's some real danger in where we're headed. And I thought Fuentes did a, a powerful job of pointing out, the revenue isn't going to be what is anticipated because of the cost to monitor it, to oversee it. I think that it was, and I'm, I'm speaking as a, as a father here, I, I don't want to live in a state with my four children in school that legalizes something to chase revenue. So that's just my, the completely personal opinion, and I would never advocate for the board, but you put me on, you know, you're asking, so I'm answering.
No, and I, I appreciate it.
But that's, yeah.
I was looking for the, your position as the, as the educator, where I, where my position is, you know, my, my expertise is totally different.
No, as a superintendent, I'm opposed to it, and, and I do believe that there's, there's some merit to some of the, the data that, in particular, Mr. Fuentes put out there, and I do think that there's a cautionary tale there in how it rolled out, especially the first couple of years in, in Colorado. And, and we're living, you know, if I drive, and I've said this at a couple of meetings, if I drive by one more vape shop, you know, that has just popped up on every corner, and you see how much they now come into our schools, even though supposedly under 18, you know, you're not supposed to be able to buy tobacco products, right, but they are, they are legion, you know, at this point, with teenagers. So I just think that that is a, a close example of what we would, could reasonably anticipate to occur with the legalization of marijuana.
I appreciate your thoughts, because I certainly have my own from my own perspective, which, you know, are total, in total agreement for the same reasons, but because of what I live day-to-day and see. But I appreciate your perspective, because I, like I said, I didn't have an opportunity to see. Thank you.
And just to, to expand Mr. Messinger's point about the resolution, you know, that's a board decision, boards do very often pass resolutions that they share with their local legislators to, to make a point, you know, and, and you'll see them on a whole gamut of things, you know, so that's a, that's a board decision as well.
Anybody else have anything they want to contribute?
Just since Mr. Messinger, you asked about, you know, straw poll, I absolutely would be in support of a board resolution that lets Trenton know that we oppose legalization.
All right, so I would just want to know if Mr. Toscano, again, not some extravagant thing that would, you know, cost a lot of money, but, and also work in conjunction with the administration to basically put in there, you know, why it's detrimental to it, you know, to teenagers, our student population, basically, and then, you know, we could circulate it among the board, and the board could, you know, approve, disapprove, revise it, et cetera.
Probably start with Mr. Messinger, just look to see if there is one already circulating amongst the New Jersey School Boards Association or the NJSA, kind of start with that as kind of a model, and then give that over to you guys to kind of tweak and, and to make changes as you see fit.
All right. Anything else in new business? All right then, anybody want to put forth a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.